All right. It is 6:00 PM. I'm going to bring the July 6, 2020 Board of Selectmen meeting to order. As Chair of the Milton Board of Selectmen, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. There is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. We are utilizing the following for this electronic meeting. Conference call for people who don't have the means to join via computer. All members of the Board of Selectmen have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting by dialing the 12-free number 844-855-4444. And upon the prompt, enter access code 145672 and push the pound sign, or by clicking or entering the following website address, https://join.freconferenccall.com/miltonta. The online meeting ID is MiltonTA. If anybody has a problem joining the meeting remotely, please call 603-545-4956, or email In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please say here.
Andy Rossin here.
Aaron Hutchings here.
Matt Morrell here.
All righty. I ask you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, Ernie, are you there?
I am.
Okay. Chief Kraus just came into the room. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead into our non-public session under RSA 91A:3, Roman numeral 2A. So I'm gonna ask anyone that has joined the meeting, we're going to disconnect this session and restart, reconvene in approximately 15 minutes. Ernie?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right. So we're gonna go ahead and disconnect the call, and we're gonna go into non-public. Do I have a second?
I'll second it. Andy Rossin.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Matt Morrell, aye.
Aaron Hutchings, aye.
There are five participants in the conference. The recording has started. Please announce yourselves.
Aaron Hutchings.
Andy Rossin.
Matt Morrell.
They say the meeting needs recording.
It's not live.
That's not live.
Ernie, you there?
I am.
All righty. All right. There will be no public comment because this is a business meeting, and given the limitations of remote access, the Board will not be opening up public comment or discussion. Let's move on to new business update regarding the COVID-19 operational activity plans. Ernie?
Yeah, so, um, as you recall at your last meeting, you voted to open up Town Hall on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, um, for business, as long as everybody wore masks and filled out the contact forms. And, um, as far as the public's concerned, and as far as employees' concerns, uh, you know, people have been taking temperatures daily and doing the protocol as spelled out in the universal, um, guidelines put out by the Governor's Office. You had discussed the last meeting, and it's kind of been happening a little bit anyway, but, um, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, either opening by appointment only, um, or I think you discussed a little bit, um, just opening up with the same, you know, restrictions, uh, for the five days. But, um, things have been running relatively smoothly. I think you had one, um, one issue today that I was told about with an individual who came into the building and then, um, proceeded to take the mask off and refused to put it back on. And, um, and I think that's, you know, protocol. I mean, I guess I would've, uh, if we had that issue, I would've probably called the chief, let him know about it, and let him, you know, come down and talk to the, to the individual. But I think, you know, as far as direction is concerned, unless you have an objection to that, that's what I would, um, advise people to do if it happens again.
Yeah, most definitely. Yep.
Think we're in agreement on that?
I mean, I'm, for me, I'm, I'm all set with opening up the Town Hall full-time. Starting Wednesday. Um, it's just, I think it's time.
No, Matt's, Matt's mulling it over.
Yeah, I mean, why not? Sure. I mean, I was gonna do it tomorrow, but I'll, I'll give everybody into Town Hall one day, you know, to get prepared, but it's just time to open it up full-time. And I like, you know, with, with the same, you know, uh, with the same, uh...
Requirements.
Requirements, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, that we have now. Um, and I like your idea, Ernie, if, uh, you know, if it's just too warm out there, or it's raining or storming, you know, to put people through the basement and come up the stairs.
They haven't been implementing that. That, that wasn't implemented, was that correct, Ernie?
I'm sorry, I had to go shut the washer off that was too loud.
The, um, the, using the basement down at the, in the Emma Ramsey, you have, they haven't been utilizing that, have they?
No, no, that, that never happened. Um, each time I did go out to talk to people, they weren't too thrilled about doing that, and I think mostly because they didn't want to lose their place in line, um, when it did get really hot once people did go into the selectmen's chambers.
Well, awesome.
And, um, on the rainy day, we did the same thing, but, uh, but downstairs, nobody's used that.
But I think if we get to opening up five days a week, I think it's gonna kind of help to alleviate a lot of the line standing and all of that.
Yeah.
I mean, right now, it was busy, it was crazy busy early today because of the, um, you know, it's the beginning of the month, so...
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And I think Michelle was here alone today, so, um...
But moving forward, Ernie, if you have to use the selectmen's chambers or downstairs, do, I mean, I'll make a motion to go ahead and utilize either room, if you need a motion for that.
Yeah, I don't think we need to do that. I mean, we, you know, I go out every once in a while and, um, and offer to people, especially if it's hot and if people look uncomfortable, um, so, I mean, and nobody's really had a problem with that in terms of staff, anyway. So, um, it seems to be working out well, but, and if we need to put people downstairs, then we'll do that. I don't, I don't really need a motion unless you want to give it, it's fine.
I, I just didn't know if you need it. So, so I did make a motion, open up Town Hall full-time on Wednesday.
Yep.
Yeah.
Can you second it?
We got a second.
All in favor?
Andy Rossin, aye.
Aaron Hutchings, aye.
Matt Morrell, aye.
Andy, I have it.
Uh, who's the second on that, please?
Matt.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, do we have anything else on the, as far as the update goes?
Not for me, I, um, we're good. I mean, I think you did agree on, um, if we have trouble with, with people adhering to the rules, that we should just call the police department and let them deal with it.
That is, that is correct. And that also includes filling out the forms as to where you've been and that. I, I actually happen to be here, um, when that took place today, and, um, no mask and refusal to fill out the form. And I mean, a lot of that is, is for everybody else's protection, as well as everyone here in Town Hall, because should somebody test positive, and that, it's also a way of getting a hold of you and letting you know you were here in Town Hall at such and such a date, and, you know, there was a positive...
And there was a, you know, there's a positive test. So it's, I mean, it covers everybody, so I just think it's a smart idea to do.
All right, if you don't have anything else, let's move on to number two on the agenda, Ira Miller's general store tax abatement agreement.
Okay, Mr. Darling, I believe, is on the line with us?
Yes.
All righty, so we talked about this, um, and reached a consensus in that, and, um, on a five-year plan, and Mr. Darling has, has asked to, us to look at it again, and he sent in an email. Did y'all have a chance to, to read it? Roy, are you there? Roy?
Yes.
Okay.
What did you say?
No, I just want to make sure you were there. I said that, you know, you had sent in the email asking us to consider an additional?
Yeah. So you, you understand that the RSA 79 could be up to five years, and then with additional two years because of the, um, the rental, and then, um, another additional four years because of the historic value of the building?
Correct.
And I understand it's a huge discretion, so that's, that's like 11 years, and to be, um, offered five years and still not 79E because I still don't understand why we didn't qualify for 79E. Um, I just, my wife and I thought that was a little, a little, uh, too shy, you know?
Either of you gentlemen have anything to... I mean, he's put a lot of work in, I mean, I, I get it, I mean, it's a...
Oh, I agree. But the way, so...
The way the law read...
Roy, you know, this, I mean, all this happened prior to me getting on the Board, and I read up as much as I possibly could, but the way I understand it was, um, when, when you would put in for this, the ball was kind of dropped on both ends, from what I understand, um, just from like...
I have paperwork that I put in on this, um, on January the 14th of '20, and then I submitted it in, uh, 6/3/19.
When did the work start, when did the work start on the property?
You, the town wasn't in 79E status when we, um, started working on it.
Right.
You were, you were working to get 79E status.
Right.
We had not told the, the meeting to accept it, and we were in the middle of construction.
All right. Do you mind if I break in here just for a moment?
No, go ahead, Ernie.
Just to, so you know, I mean, you know, you did, the intention here, I think, is pretty clear from, from everybody's standpoint, that, uh, you know, this was supposed to be a 79E project. The problem is, is identified, uh, is that 79E wasn't adopted, and, uh, there wasn't really a valid way of, you know, to, um, to get it in place, um, prior to substantial completion, unless there's, you know, something that I missed there, but that's what the whole premise is, is 79E was not adopted. I know the community, the intention was to do this, and that's why you're here trying to negotiate, uh, you know, the, the multi-year tax abatement in lieu of 79E. But I think there was just a misunderstanding on, on all sides, um, as to how the 79E would work. Because this is, um, the application and that whole process should really have started prior to anything really happening with the building, but be that as it may, I mean, here you are, and you're trying to make it, uh, make it work out right for the home user, yes, for the Darlings.
We were also the poster child of it, on the front of your, um, book, the acceptance of everybody.
Yes, you were.
It's slightly embarrassing.
More so for us.
Well, I'm, I'm, you know, Roy, uh, this is Andy Rossin, um, you know, first of all, I'm, I'm thrilled that, you know, the work that you guys did over there, uh, because if, you know, I can't say if you didn't do it, it wouldn't have been done, but probably not, um, because that building was in such shambles that, uh, you know, probably everybody would've turned their heads, and I, and I do realize it was a lot of work, and, um, and now the storage is a huge asset to, uh, to the community there in Milton Mills. So, uh, I'm hearing you. I'll make a motion to go eight years to make it somewhat right for the town and, and the Darlings.
I'll go ahead and second that motion for eight years. All those in favor?
Should be asking how he feels about it.
How do you feel about it?
That's good, um, that's okay. I, I appreciate that.
No, we appreciate you and everything you've done down there. It's a beautiful place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there, was there a roll call going on there?
We haven't, we haven't done it. Matt felt that I should ask Mr. Darling how he felt about eight years before, before I jumped to the roll call vote, and he was right. He was right. All right, so all those in favor?
Matt Morrell, aye.
Aaron Hutchings, aye.
Andy Rossin, aye.
All righty, Mr. Darling, I hope that...
Peases.
Eases your...
That's the end of it for the store, now we're gonna deal with the yellow house.
Oh, Lord. All right.
Can I leave now, or am I good?
You're, you're all, you're all set, sir. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, guys, have a great night.
You too. Bye. All right, did you get all that, Ernie?
I did.
Motion was Andy, I seconded it, all in favor. All right, next up, Jones Brook discussion.
Yeah, so, um, on the, on the Jones Brook discussion, I went down and talked to John Cadwick. He's excited about getting going on cleaning up the Jones Brook. It's just, unfortunately, um, it wasn't taken care of in the past, the past, you know, three, four, five years, who knows? It's been overgrown, and, um, it's actually quite an ice ore, but it's a beautiful, beautiful piece of property. And, um, so John wants to, he wants to, you know, take the bull by the horns and get a, get a group of people together and, and go in there and do some major renovations and cleaning, and, and, uh, and I, I don't want to, I don't want to stop the terrain, truthfully.
And I think it's a great idea. My only question is, who's gonna keep, do the upkeep on it once it's gotten back to...
Well, it's, 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 it's a town piece of property, so...
Is it conservation?
Nope.
It's not in conservation?
It's held, it's held under an easement of the town.
Okay.
So, you know, once, once we get the property all cleaned up, um, you know, we'll, we'll have to figure that all out.
Okay.
But, but, I mean, let's not put the cat before the horse, let's, let's get the property cleaned up, and, um, to where we can, you know, there's some nice trails down at the water, let's get them going, and, uh, you know, this was a Leo Lassad's, um, project when he was, unfortunately, not here anymore, but when he was here, this was his baby, and, um, the townspeople loved Leo Lassad, so I think in his honor, we should just, uh, keep, keep it going. So, um, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to have John Cadwick, um, uh...
Spearhead.
Spearhead the project, thank you, Aaron, and, um, he will update the Board as he goes, and, um, and if anybody out there that wants to help clean up Jones Brook, um, there's a lot of work there to be done, um, you can contact, do you mind, Ernie, if they contact you?
Not at all.
Okay, you can contact the Town Hall and talk to Ernie Krevlin, he's the Town Administrator, and, um, and then he can get you over to John Cadwick. So, I want to thank John for taking this project on, and, um, I can't wait to see it done.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Andy Rossin, aye.
Aaron Hutchings, aye.
Matt Morrell, aye.
All righty. Ernie, you're up, vote to authorize the tax exempt drawdown on the TANs.
Okay. First off, I want to explain this a little bit, um, because when the COVID-19 issue started, you know, nobody was really sure where it was going to go, and, um, New Hampshire Municipal Association did a survey of communities to try to get an idea of how much impact it might have on, on tax receipts. And, as you know, there have been numerous, 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 um, executive orders issued by the government with regard to these things, and, uh, you know, with taxes and interest and, and what the community can do in terms of forgiving those things because of the COVID issue. But one of the other things, too, that, um, they were concerned about was the ability for towns to be able to collect enough, um, you know, to pay their obligations. So, not really knowing that what was going to happen, we projected, we know that 62% of our taxes are collected, uh, through escrow accounts, so those are pretty steady. Um, but the rest of them, we weren't really sure, but based upon the revenues that we were, that we appeared to be getting at the time, and believe me, it's just a very short window to try to project something on, uh, it looked like, you know, we could rely on maybe 75 or 80% for sure, leaving a gap, because we normally collect, uh, around, you know, 92 to 95% of taxes, and then eventually get the rest as you, as you, uh, deal with tax due to properties and so forth, but there is a, a small amount that you, you don't collect every year. So, anyway, to make a long story short, because the go-for funding does provide for, um, paying for the expense of any potential interest on a TAN, and also for any of the legal expenses you incur in actually getting the tax anticipation note, um, we went ahead and did a cash flow analysis, and based on that, we found that it, you know, there was, you know, using the assumptions that we used, that at some point, um, toward the end of the year, there was a possibility of a, of a shortfall, because remember, we're paying school, uh, based on the, um, the drawdown schedule it gives us, you know, we have, uh, obligations, payroll, and so forth, and every once in a while, just like the regular business, um, they might need an infusion of working capital, and that's what the TAN really is, is, is cash to be able to make sure you meet your obligation with the anticipation that you would get the, the tax money to pay it back. So, now, the second part of it is that this is a kind of a tax anticipation note that, uh, that you don't actually pay anything on unless you use it. So, uh, if we get the approval here, you're going to authorize it, but what's gonna happen is, and I got word that the bank did approve, and I just have to fill out a different cash flow statement for their record, so it's in their same format. So, that'll sit there in reserve, you've got the approval, and it may get to, you know, July of next year, because it's a year-long, uh, year approval, and not have to use any of it, in which case you spend no money on interest. So, uh, you know, there's, there aren't a lot of those available out there. We found this one through, uh, Masoma Bank, and, uh, you know, we got approval for them to lend it to the town, uh, even though, um, they're, you know, they're out in the Keene area, but this, this kind of tax anticipation note, I mean, is great because you don't have to use it, but you have it in case you need it, and that's the reason we did it.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions on that?
No, I mean, nope. It's, it's, you know, it's unfortunate, but we, you know, we have to make sure that the town's end is covered, so, um, you know, so, no, I think it's a good idea, and, and I appreciate all your hard work, Ernie, you know, finding, uh, this bank that'll do this for us. Do you need a motion?
Unfortunately, it's a long thing to read, but that's the motion I got from the attorney.
All right, I will make a motion to vote to authorize 3.7, $3,750,000 tax anticipation note for fiscal year 2020, be approved in the form presented to this meeting, and that an attested copy of said vote be included with the minutes of this meeting.
Do you want a second?
Oh, okay, I'll, I'll...
Now, the other three things have to be read.
Okay.
Um...
Do you want the rest of it?
You want me to do that, or you want to do that, or...
That, I'll, I'll do it. That the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Milton authorizes the Town Administrator and the Town Treasurer acting singly to arrange with a financial institution for the issuance and sale of a tax anticipation note of the Town for fiscal year 2020 in the principal amount of $3,750,000 on a drawdown basis, and on such other terms as the Town Administrator or Treasurer in his or her discretion may approve, and any prior such arrangement is ratified and confirmed. The under and pursuant to the provisions RSA 33:7 and Town Meeting Approval of Article 6 of the March 12, 1994 Annual Town Meeting Warrant authorizing indefinitely the issuance of tax anticipation notes. The Board and the Treasurer are authorized to borrow in anticipation of tax receipts for the fiscal year 2020 in the name of the Town of Milton, the sum of up to $3,750,000, and to issue general obligation securities of the Town in a principal amount not to exceed $3,750,000 to evidence such borrowing, the note, and to execute and deliver the note, signed by a majority of the Board and countersigned by the Treasurer under the seal of the Town as applicable dated on or about July 7, 2020, in such form as the Board and Treasurer may approve, and that the appropriate officials of the Town are authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town such documents, certificates, as may be required in connection with such borrowing. That the Treasurer is authorized to covenant on behalf of the Town that no part of the proceeds of the note shall be used directly or indirectly to acquire any securities or, and obligations, the acquisition of which would cause the note to be an arbitrage bond, with the meaning of Section 148 of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended, and the proceeds of the note shall be used in a manner that would cause the note to be a private activity bond within the meaning of Section 141 of the Code, and that the note, as applicable, is designed as a qualified taxes debt obligation within the meaning of Section 265B3 of said Code, and that the Treasurer is authorized to covenant on behalf of the Town to file any information report and pay any rebate due to... to file any information report and pay any rebate due to the, due to the United States in connection with the issuance of the note, to take all other lawful actions necessary to ensure the interest on the note will be excludable from gross income of the owners thereof for purposes of federal income taxation, and to refrain from taking any action which would cause interest on the note to become excludable in the gross income of the owners thereof.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it. Andy Rossin.
All those in favor?
Yep.
Name?
Matt Morale, yep.
Andy Rossin, yes.
Aaron Hutchings, yes. Thank you. Alright, you all set on that, Ernie?
Excuse me?
I said, are you all set with that?
I am.
Did you get every word he said? No, I think he's good with that. Alright, moving on to old business. Request for a one-year extension for completion of project on the tax-deded auction property located at 1121 White Mountain Highway. And what that is, is a little over a year ago, we sold to Mr. Fritzinger the property at 1121 White Mountain Highway through the auction that, that we had. He had the uh, he has been working on that. He applied for permits, et cetera, and um, he's not met the date, but he has done a considerable amount of work to the property, and he asked for an extension um, on that, because we had, we had placed some guidance on there so that it didn't just sit empty like other buildings have in town. So um, I think we should grant it to him. I mean, I think he's done extensive work.
Yeah, I know, I mean, I'm fully on board. Uh, I've talked to him a couple of times. Uh, I know when he was up there doing one project, he just got covered in poison ivy.
Oh, Lord.
So um, but the place already looks 100 times better than it did.
Yeah.
So I, I don't have a problem extending, and I appreciate him asking um, to extend it one year.
Think we're all in agreement on that?
No, I'd rather see six months. Honestly. I mean, the... So his main reason to asking, I mean, other than one problem to the next, he had a chance to look at the property, didn't he, first? Prior to the auction?
Mm-hmm.
And then the stay-at-home order with, with coronavirus, COVID-19, whatever you want to call it, caused a delay, but how long has that been going on for? Six months?
March.
Okay, so five. So why does he need a year?
I don't think he lives there, though. I mean, it's not like he's, you know, you know what other...
No, I understand that, but I know he doesn't live there, but why does he, why does he need a year for it?
Says here he wants to make sure the home is remodeled correctly and without any shortcuts or cheap fixes. He, the building permit currently runs out in October, but because there was some... Ernie, correct me if I'm wrong, I think there was some things, some back and forth with the lawyers and that over getting all the deeds for the property straightened out. The auction was held in May, but it was...
Have a little bit back and forth. It was, it was probably extra three weeks or something like that, but there was, yeah.
So right now, it seems like his current, according to his letter here, it looks like the current building permit will run out in October.
Yep.
So...
I still don't see a reason why he's asking for a year.
Right.
You know, we can go, we can do this route, too. We can, we can extend it for six months and revisit it in six months.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, there's been countless times I've driven by, and I've seen absolutely no vehicles there, nothing being done. And I understand he wants to do it right, but same time, he knew what the guidelines were, he should have known what the property looked like prior to even, prior to the auction. He had a chance to look at it. So six months and I, I motion for six months.
I'll, I'll, I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Andy Rossin, aye.
Matt Morale, aye.
Debating whether I should have stayed. I'm not gonna be here. Or I guess I can make the vote. Aye, Aaron Hutchings. No. And we'll review it in six months. Ernie?
Yes, so you got a motion to extend six months with the review at that time, and uh, that motion was made by Matt, seconded by Andy, and a roll call vote was yes by everybody?
Correct.
Got it.
Alrighty, next up, status of the following tax-deded structures. 565, White Mountain Highway, 79 Charles Street, and 20 Dawson. And I have nothing else, so...
Yeah, well, really what this is, I asked Ernie to put this on um, on the agenda, because, you know, we need to really... Ernie, where are we at with 565? Are we, are we there?
That should be ready to put out um, to auction, if that's what you're gonna do with it. Um, it should be clear toward the end of August. That thing has been a, you know, as you know yourself.
An albatross.
Um, just one thing after the other, but um, we got the final notices posted on the building, and um, that, uh, that was a 90-day notice, and that ends sometime toward the end of August.
What about the other two, 20 Dawson and 79 Charles?
Uh, well, both of those, I, I'll be honest, I think we need to go through and take a look at the files on, on both of them. I believe 79 Charles, most of the, of that work has been done, and it's, it's probably in good shape. But 20 Dawson, I don't really know anything about in terms of how it was deeded and whether everything was noticed properly. That frequently is the problem you run into with these things that um, you know, is that sometimes they're just not noticed correctly, or the, the proper people aren't notified. Um...
Well, the only problem with...
Yeah, and those just have to be looked at.
The only problem with Dawson was there was a sewer lien on it, and it was put on by the town. So that's the only reason why we didn't put that on the auction when we did, when we had our last fall auction, or whenever it was. But as, for, for me, as soon as 565 can be auctioned, um, if you can look at these other two, have Kathy look at these other two, and for me anyways, I, I'd like to get these going at the, when, when we're able to get rid of 565, do them all at once. Maybe a sealed bid or something. Well, we can talk about it, uh, you know, as it gets closer. We just get all the legwork done to get, make sure they're good to go.
Okay.
How many other properties do we have that can be sent down the road, too? Do we, alright, well, maybe you don't know off the top of your head, Ernie, that's fine, but um, as we get closer to these three, can we uh, can we figure that out and hopefully uh, get rid of a whole bunch of property?
Yep, well um, bring, at some point, I think earlier, maybe a few meetings ago, um, had the whole list of tax-deded properties there.
Yep.
But yes, I'll definitely um, send those to you.
I know we have a lot of land... I know we have a loo... Sorry. No, I said, I know we have a lot of landlocked, tax-deded properties, so maybe we can start contacting some of others, and...
That's a good idea, yeah.
Yeah. So, I appreciate it, Ernie.
No problem.
Alrighty, and then next up is a, I think we handled the appointment, actually, of Wayne Sylvester, did we not, at our last meeting?
We didn't, because we didn't get a...
You actually appointed him as a alternate, and um, you uh, did get a, an email, like, that's in your packet, that um, showed that Paul Blanc was not gonna review his position.
Right.
Um, it says, unfortunately, I will not be able to continue as a Commissioner. As you know, my term ended. I hope in the future to devote my time to the Conservation Commission. Thank you all, and stay healthy. And then um, Mr. Sylvester um, received notice of that and wanted to um, rescind his, or relinquish the alternate role and be appointed as a full member.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to go ahead and accept um, Paul Blanc's resignation from the Conservation Commission, and go ahead in, as a full-time um, Commissioner, and go ahead and appoint Wayne Sylvester to take his place.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Matt Morale, aye.
Aaron Hutchings, aye.
Andy Rossin, aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne, for stepping up and, and being part of the Conservation full-time. Appreciate it.
Who was the second on that?
Me, Andy Rossin.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, as um, next up is under other business. I have the envelopes for the open seat, my seat, for the Select Board. Gosh, I'm like shaking a little. Alright. Do you want me to go ahead and open the sealed envelopes, Ernie?
Well, that's what the um, process said. That was online, is that you would get the, uh, that they just submitted, uh, they're sealed, and you would uh, open them up and just read the names of the candidates, and uh, then the remaining two Select Board members would schedule a meeting um, to decide what they're going to do.
Alrighty. So first off here, I have Mr. Lawrence Brown. Next I have Claudine Burnham. Humphrey Williams. And that is all we have, are those three um, three submissions.
Alright, well, we'll uh, we'll take it under advisement, and uh, I think we, we have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday. Is that fine with you, Matt?
Yep.
Um, and we have a meeting scheduled for one day, uh, Wednesday, and uh, Matt and I will, will go over the three letters of interests, and um, we'll discuss it, and hopefully we can come up with a, uh, with a candidate. And I appreciate everybody who put in for it, and, and uh, just, I want to thank you.
Yep, yeah. Thanks, everybody who submitted letters.
Alright, next up.
Can I, can I clarify? So um, did you, were you gonna meet Wednesday? Is that what I heard?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I'll make sure we get that notice. Thank you.
Yep.
Alright, next up is approval of minutes. First, the June 15th.
Yeah, I'll make a, did you read them? Are you all set, Matt?
Yep.
You all set?
Yep.
So I'll make a motion to accept as written, June 15th, 2020 mate, uh, minutes.
I'll second it. Rope. All those in favor?
Matt Morale, aye.
Aaron Hutchings, aye.
Andy Rossin, aye.
Alrighty. Next up, approval of minutes from the June 30th, both public and non-public.
Yep, are you all set? So I'll make a motion to accept the June 30th uh, meeting minutes as written.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Matt Morale, yes.
Aaron Hutchings, yes.
Andy Rossin, yes.
Thank you. Expenditure report. Oh, you guys review this, I'll be right back. I gotta go grab something.
Are you all set with the expenditure? How are we doing on the expenditure uh, report, Ernie?
Um, well, there's nothing that is um, that is completely out of whack. I think the highest, um, I think if you look at um, planning and code, you know, you're up at 48% there. I mean, you're at 50% of the year they had to do was buy code books. Um, this year, 'cause of the, of the code that was adopted, so they had to do that, and that's why they're up there, where most everybody else is uh, you know, because of the COVID-19 situation, um, it's down in the, you know, mid, some lower 40s.
Mm-hmm.
So unless you have any particular areas where you're um, concerned... I mean, you'll see that in the unanticipated um, expenses uh, line under debt service interest. That one's 127% over, you know, expended. But that's where we have been placing everything that's reimbursable from the um, the Governor's Office, Office uh, Grants, known as the Gopher Grants.
Yeah.
And then FEMA. So there's a combination of um, sources for reimbursement. We're tracking them all there, just to keep them in one place.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Ernie, do you know how um, how the sewer is doing with their, with their uh, with their issue with getting some quotes? Have you, have you heard anything yet, or no?
You know, I, I just, I got, I was copied on a request by one of the folks who looked at the plant um, for some additional information, so then, I mean, they are out there, they are getting, we are getting the quotes.
Okay, just curious.
Alright, anything else on the expenditure?
Is there a reason why we're $2,000 over on workers' compensation?
Ernie? On, on which, is there a reason why we're $2,000 over on the workers' compensation? What line, Matt?
Uh, insurance benefits, uh, 01-41.
Yeah, there was, let me see. I'll have to look at that. I know that the workers' comp insurance, um...
Did it go up or something?
The billing was a little bit higher, but I think there's some other things that are in there. I'll have to look at it before you get back to it.
Anything else? I guess we're quick to remember, right? Conserving. Matt, anything else, or?
No, I don't know, just...
Alright, Administrator comments?
Um, yeah, just, uh, an update on the first grant reimbursement request uh, through the uh, Gopher funding. I, I gave you a breakdown, you know, the cover sheet that went with the grant um, reimbursement request, and after a little bit of back and forth and some clarification on uh, on some things, we got a grand total of $16,321.22. And... Um, and there's a combination of things in there, like, uh, within there you'll see what's, uh, cleaning supplies, number 10. I mean, that's not a lot, but there are some, uh, and safety equipment, that's a little bit of a, of a larger one. Um, we can only, um, ask for 25% of the total expenditure because the 25% is the amount that FEMA will not reimburse more toward the end of the year, so we just ask for the 25%, and then, um, when Nick puts in his application for the FEMA funds, uh, we should garner the, the remainder of that, so we should get a hundred percent of the funding back on those two categories. And remember that this is just from March 1st through April 30th, and the next one will be made through June, and we have to get that one together by the 15th of this month to get it in. But, um, but anyway, that's, uh, um, that money right there is reimbursable for any of the COVID-19 related expenses, and even though that looks like a, that's a lower figure, remember that, um, there are some figures that are, are quite a bit higher because we can only apply for the 25% of what was expended through this source.
Alrighty, thank you. Selectmen comments? Did you have anything else? I'm sorry, I took your nickel away without... Did you have anything else, Ernie?
That's fine.
Okay.
I got one more thing on this expenditure report, as I'm just kind of flipping through it again, but fired, maybe it's, maybe it's just a typo? I don't know, but fire department mileage slash travel says, uh, over on the, um, percentage used is 1,435%. Is that a typo?
What's it say in the line, in the previous columns?
Negative thirteen point three five, zero zero, then under, uh, year-to-date expenditure is fourteen thirty-five, and then the net budget's one.
There's a one dollar, um, appropriation, so it wouldn't take much to, you know, to put it way up there.
Fourteen dollars and thirty-five cents?
Right.
Sounds like tolls or something.
Right.
And then, uh, then the one right below it, the miscellaneous line, negative four hundred and nineteen.
All right, another one with a dollar placeholder.
Yeah.
I'll look into those, yeah.
I mean, it, you know, they might just be typos, and that's fine, I was just, as I was flipping through it real quick, I was just curious.
Okay.
Alrighty.
We need to understand who's on it.
All right.
Andy?
Um, well, first, first, um, well, I have, under, um, so, I got an email from Jen Duprat. She asked me to read this into the minutes. Did you get the email? You want to know it? So it says, "Good morning, I'd like to extend my appreciation to Pat Smith and his ground, grounds and maintenance crew for placing the post for the volleyball net so quickly down at the town beach. I spoke to Pat, and the next day his crew had the post in, in place. I would also like to thank Katie Colby, um, the Middleton Building Supply Store of Hampton for the donation of the post." Um, I did have some difficulties finding email address for Pat, and I'm using the one for DPW Facebook page. It turns out this email, all right, so, um, so she asked me to read this into the minutes, uh, into the BOS minutes. So, in a nutshell, she just wants to thank DPW for, for helping getting the volleyball net fixed, and now they're going to get the net up and, and, uh, so they're going to be able to play volleyball down there. So, thanks, Jen, for, for, um, going out and, and doing your due diligence, trying, finding a, you know, someone who donated a, a new post for us, and, and, uh, Pat and his crew for putting it up.
Thank you.
Yep. And, um, I...
Under other business.
Yeah, do you want, are, do we have another business?
Yeah, we got other business, we can...
All right, we'll do that.
No, go ahead.
Oh. All right, so on the other business, um, I just have, uh, two hires for the, uh, gate, gatekeepers. Um, Karen is losing a couple of staff down there, and, um, so I have two, two, we both, we've, we've looked at all these, uh, well, these two...
We can't mention their names.
No. And, um, I'm, I'd hi, I'd like to hire, uh, both of these gatekeepers, um, uh, for the conditional offer, um, that's in here, uh, just can't tell their names, so, for gatekeepers, um, I just need a second to hire them.
I'll make a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Matt Morrell.
Matt Morrell, aye.
Aaron Hutchings, aye.
That's all I have. Thank you.
No problem. And that's it for Selectmen comments?
Yep.
Matt?
Nope.
All right. My only comment is, thank you all. I have, uh, enjoyed my time here. Tonight's my last meeting, and, um, I, uh, I hope you get through the process to pick my replacement quickly and painlessly.
Yeah, and again, thank you, Aaron, for, for coming into town and, and wanting to be part of the, the community, and, and, um, most people don't step up to the plate like you did, and I can't thank you enough.
Enjoy.
And you ran against me and won, but we're, we're right back here, uh, doing our work, and that's fine, you know?
Yep.
So, good luck to you and your endeavors, and, um, keep safe.
Thank you. Alrighty, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Matt Morrell, yes.
Aaron Hutchings, yes.
Andy Rossin, yes.